Good afternoon. It's Tuesday, August nineteenth at full PM. We welcome you to our council work meeting. We'll begin with the local call, starting with Councilor Kay.
Catrice McKay.
Rachel Whipple.
Gary Garrett.
Becky Bogdan.
Craig Christensen.
George, Commissioner, Counselor Hanley and Counselor Hoben are excused. Counselor Hanley is present.
Who is that?
Counselor Hoben is excused. We expect him to join us shortly. We also excuse Mayor Kafusi, who is involved in the fire situation here in Provo. It's proposed that we approve the following minutes, the April eighth council meeting and the August fifth work meeting. Are there any objections or requested changes to these minutes? If not, I declare the minutes approved by unanimous consent and we welcome Counselor Hoben also to our meeting. I did want to just comment, Kevin, and thank you for your work on the minutes for April eighth. As I reviewed those thirty pages, was it twenty, twenty-five or thirty-five or forty-five public comments? You did a very good job summarizing.
I think all the credit. I can't take the credit for that. That's Heidi's work. She does the night meeting minutes.
Okay, all right. Oh, you can take that. She'll never know.
But I will leave a message to you. She does a good job.
Please do. That was a huge prod. Our first agenda item is a discussion regarding data center policy and zoning considerations. This will be presented by one of our city planners, Hannah Salz, and Justin Harrison, our council executive director.
All right. Thank you, council. I'm gonna kick this off hopefully quickly unless there's any questions and then turn the time over to Hannah to talk specifically about the zone changes that are being proposed as part of the data center policy. So as you'll remember earlier this year, a proposed rezone application was submitted for a data center in West Provo and it kind of sparked this discussion with the council and with the city as an entity on, on a formalized policy on data centers and what should be done to give both city staff and the development community who's coming into Provo and looking at locating these data centers a little direction on expectations from the city and elected official side, but also what they should expect to present and submit as far as an application process. So during the April eighth council meeting, direction was given by the council to staff to begin working on this policy. Since then, the council office has been working with various departments, including Development Services, Public Works, Provo Power and our partner agency that were a member of UNPA to develop this really high level thirty thousand foot policy document so that there are goals and deliverables enshrined in a policy from the city and from the council and expectations set for developers. So some of those, those goals included safeguarding Provo Power's customers and keeping that fiscal integrity that Provo Power has maintained for some years, ensuring compliance with UNPA, including their bond covenants and generation agreements, which are located in the appendices to the city policy. UNPA has two policies. Require, requiring full cost recovery from developers and for infrastructure operations, promoting economic and community benefits, including job creation and tax base expansion, and encouraging alignment with the general plan, specifically with land use, sustainability and innovation. And then just again establishing clear, consistent expectations for developers. So, let's see. Kevin, do you have that policy by chance?
We don't.
All right, so quick table of contents of the twelve sections in the policy. I won't go through this. But really, again, just the purpose, creating a clear regulatory and procedural framework for both the city and developers. This was developed in conjunction with some of the state codes that we abide by as a specific form of government, but also the Utah Technology and Governance Act, which provides some requirements for things like data centers in state code. You can see the policy goals and objectives there that I mentioned earlier. But wanted to mention specifically in section three, so applicability and scope. So this applies to data centers ranging from five to fifty megawatts and those over fifty megawatts. That is also delineated in the UNPA policies, the appendices. They have some separate requirements, so we felt that it was important to designate this policy as being applicable to just those. Department staff felt comfortable that small data centers of less than five megawatts could be handled under current load requirements within the city within reason. Now, that's not to say that all of a sudden we get fifty applicants for less than five megawatts, things start to change, but you get the idea that we already have some of those currently operating within the city without issue.
Counselor Hanley.
Just a question about what the logic is about the breakpoint in fifty. Do you know, I'm going about why that's?
Sure. So over fifty in the UNPA policy, so that requires for the data center connecting to the member city to turn that facility over to UNPA to actually run. That's what.
But you don't know why the fifty?
I wouldn't want to jump to a conclusion of why. Oh, perfect. Scott, to save the day. There we go.
If Scott can answer it.
Yes. Any questions before I jump, jump ahead? Section four is criteria for data center consideration. This is where Hannah will be much better versed and much more polished in her presentation on what the appropriately zoned areas are. This is a discussion that was had between those departments and they've got some recommendations specifically for the pick in M one areas. Right now, data centers are allowed by right in a much larger area that don't necessarily seem appropriate for, for their use. And the new, well, the current areas where they're allowed that they will continue to be allowed should this be passed are, they have a, a close proximity or access to large infrastructure that would serve this type of customer.
Justin, just a question for relative comparison. That data center that was presented to the council six to eight months ago?
Yes.
How many, how large of a center was that? Would that have been over fifty?
Yeah, that was a hundred.
It was a hundred?
Yeah, they wanted their station.
Okay.
Which is just a pretty typical of the big AI ones.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
This policy also mirrors some of the language in the UNPA policies prohibiting generation islanding, just safeguarding Provo's electric grid as to not allow these, should things fall apart, allowing for stranded assets to sit there. And then there being a requirement for Provo to pick up those pieces. Also mentioning that applicants need to be in compliance with federal and state environmental and air quality regulations. So Provo is, is in the northern Wasatch Front ozone non-attainment zone, so there is an extra level of sensitivity and difficulty in receiving those air quality permits. Because you've got existing businesses that may or may want to expand that also if they choose to do that, would need to qualify and apply for those permits as well as other new types of businesses. So it is, they're not given, what should I say, just freely. They're, they are a of limited quantity.
Right, like if we gives them all away, nothing else can come here that would need them.
Just a few other things we saw fit to put in there. Public benefits, we thought that was worth mentioning. As there has been a lot of discussion and news surrounding, you know, what types of, types of jobs and what what income level do these jobs come into the city? Are these low level jobs? Are these higher than median income jobs? So receiving some of that financial data, working with economic development with those developers to, to understand that prior to moving forward on a project. We also saw fit, this is more towards kind of the mechanics of what does an application look like, but an application and approval process. So just what does a pre-application conference look like? Who are those departments that need to be a part of that? And a list of submission requirements that the developer knows right up front what to expect when they, when they're submitting an application. That this isn't just come in and say, hey, we'd like to bring something shiny. Please approve it. But what is, what are the facts behind, behind this? One thing I wanted to talk about particularly with this construction milestones and phasing, I think that's something that each of you in your time on the council, I'm sure have seen projects come in and maybe fail to meet the expectations that you thought of when they were approved. So having a detailed timeline and milestones as part of the phasing of a project would allow for regular check-ins so that expectations that were brought at the beginning of a project are met. And then lastly, just kind of a timeline workflow of what, what a technical administrative and permitting review would look like from the city if an application were to move forward. I know I'm kind of flying through this. Any, any questions on those sections? Again, just very high level.
Did you, sorry, did you talk about the identify opportunities for renewable energy investments? I'm curious what that is. I mean, I guess more generally, my question is, given the discussion we had a few months ago where natural gas was what was being offered. And there was a discussion of gee, wouldn't it be better if we were so far along, say it was nuclear, that we could have an entire AI center, you know, provided by nuclear energy so we have completely clean. So I'm, I'm interested in both air quality and renewable energy requirements of some kind or some, so I, that's what I'm paying attention to as you're just talking through this, but I don't know what that means. Does that mean like we would, we would say we're open to admitting an AI center, a data center that is powered by natural gas, but we would expect to transition to other renewable energies by a certain date. And how does that jive with the compliance with federal and state environmental and air quality regulations? So that's all very vague.
Yeah, and I think the intent is again to be very high level. We're talking kind of thirty thousand foot. Could you put something as specific as that in there? You absolutely could. I think this is setting the expectation that you want to engage in that conversation of renewables. You know, in the market right now, sad Scott's not here because I'd love to throw this to him, but you know, is there, is that realistic? Is that a reality? I think many would probably say no right now, but I think it shows that the city is at least interested in hearing on potential pieces of data centers being powered by renewable sources or companies that are looking towards that in the future, if that makes sense. Wish I could give, give some more detail. That's not to say that you could require.
It seems like the sticky question then becomes going back to that previous bullet point about state environmental air quality regulations and even above bullet point about our own general plan, if we're saying we'd like it to be consistent with our general plan, we'd like it to meet state requirements for air quality. And we're interested in renewable energy investments. To me, all three of those things can potentially move a project in the right direction, but it's not clear to me if it's even possible at this point.
Sure.
So that's, those seem to me to be really troublesome questions, but I'm glad to see language in there. I guess you're saying if we just have the language in there and then we start looking at a proposal and we can say, oh, that, that actually doesn't meet our general plan requirements. Maybe you're meeting the state requirements, but it doesn't help us as a city. And we're not satisfied with renewable energy component of it, so no.
Right.
Okay.
Perfect. I will jump to couple other sections. So financial safeguards. Again, ensuring that cost is borne by the applicant and not going back to either our ratepayers as Provo citizens or to UNPA as our, our power provider, which then gets spread across citizens from all, all member cities. Transparency and disclosure requirements, annual reports on emissions, you know, auditing requirements, just things that I think would be better to have a conversation about, or at least put in the forefront of a policy for an applicant to know as opposed to asking for those types of considerations later. Again, pointed to this earlier, but ownership and oversight of monitoring. If we don't get to this, George, I'll be, be sure to follow up with Scott on that over fifty megawatt. What's, what's that breaking point? Why there? What transfer to UNPA for operation? Just meeting Provo Power standards and compliance with Provo Power and the Energy Board. Again, mentioned this earlier and prohibited practices, but no islanding or leaving of the stranded assets so that they're not connected. And again, that cost burden and not being able to be placed on, on ratepayers or other UNPA member cities. And then real quickly, just review biannual review of the UNPA policies as they've got board members. Go ahead, Counselor Bogdan. Sorry about that.
No, it's okay. How, how do we make sure that we're not stuck with stranded assets?
So requiring, at least in my understanding, requiring that they be connected to, to the grid as opposed to allowing for an asset to be built and only connected to, to.
Okay, so that's the island power plant thing. Okay. We still might be stuck with an abandoned set of buildings.
Possibly, but at least if it's connected to the grid could be used for not only Provo Power, but for other UNPA cities who are in need of additional power resources. And just a requirement for annual review of the UNPA policies. They have board members. Those may change. And then a note to review state code and Provo city code for any, for any changes. And then just a reference to the two appendices.
Justin. If you go back to seven.
Yes.
What does it mean in a city? City may establish utility tariff for local cost recovery?
Yes. So as part of, I'm gonna pull this right from the UNPA policy so I don't get it wrong.
The reason I ask, it sounds like it's in contradiction of ten. This says no cost burden may be placed on Provo Power or, or Provo citizens.
Yes. So this is more about, so in this sense, as a member of, of UNPA as a as our power provider, UNPA would negotiate a power purchase agreement with the actual data center. That's part of, of their policy as well as, as this proposed policy. That's just an agreement between the the entity that is creating the power in this case and then being purchased. There's an ability for the city to charge a tariff for that transmission with it if it's being transmitted through the city.
A tariff to the, to the data center?
Correct. Or to the, the, the power provider. In this case, that if, if it's a data center that is generating also has a power generation on site, that, that tariff wouldn't be charged to citizens, but on the the data center that's providing the power.
Yeah, so unlike the UNPA policy, it's got the description of the tariff, kind of like a rate schedule. And there are lots of different provisions for what's included in that and how to look at it. It was surprising to see that it's called a tariff because we're hearing about tariffs elsewhere lately. But the, the policy is helpful for seeing what all that includes.
That's all I have on the draft policy. I'll turn it over to Hannah to talk specifically about those those zone changes. Hannah, I don't know if you prefer the, the map. We've got a current zoning. Okay, perfect.
Well, Hannah's making her way to the front. Let me welcome Eric Kafusi and Scott Henderson, who were able to join us near the beginning of this discussion. Thanks for coming.
Yay.
Right, we've only got about ten minutes left, so I'll move quickly, but do feel free to interrupt. I'll try to do time for questions at the end though. So with this proposed amendment, just a heads up with this pulse check from you, the next step for us is taking it to the study session for the Planning Commission on the twenty-seventh. So if you feel like you need more time, let us know, but we're starting to move forward with that. Getting the ball rolling. So with first the zones and then I'll get into the policies and standards. Data centers are currently permitted in seventeen zones, the total just under three thousand acres and have no additional specific development standards. These standards would restrict it down to two zones, which total about six hundred seventy-seven acres. That's just under a quarter of the currently allowed acreage. It would set development standards for all sizes, even those under a five megawatt hour.
Yeah, so with the two zones, I was looking at this and we also have that two hundred foot SEFA from residential property. So it means like the ones that are down in Mazur just wouldn't be viable because of their proximity to houses, right?
And if they're not in an area where it's viable, then maybe that's just not a place where they belong. Yeah, that's.
Yeah, so then the actual acreage at which these could potentially be allowed is much less than what would be indicated by the zone.
Because of the distance buffer, yeah, it would cut into this acreage. So it's even less than just under a quarter. Yeah.
And so I have a question about those two west side zones. I mean, we just mixed some from the west side because it wasn't close to any of the utilities. Why do we have those here?
Because those are part of the M one zone. So this is just the first broad step is, is it in a zone where it's appropriate? And then the next question within that is and then is this an appropriate location within that zone? So those might get weeded out depending on the size of the data center coming in, but a smaller data center could go in those areas and be all right. It, it wouldn't tax the grid.
I, I don't know. I mean, I was told that it was much more than just energy. It was also they need a big gas pipeline and all of that is more appropriate in Ironton or across the freeway.
Especially as we're looking at these larger ones, that's absolutely true. For something that is like a four megawatt hour consistent load, that is pretty small and could connect with the existing infrastructure, which is why UNPA doesn't have any additional policies for ones of that size. But this separating policies for data centers by their megawatt hour is something that I haven't seen in my other research in other cities, but I think is effective for this exact kind of question. We're kind of piloting that a little bit, it seems, from what I can find. Just a thing to note before I keep moving on, there are some base development standards for data centers of all sizes, even those below five, and those up to fifty, from zero to fifty would be approved administratively and reviewed administratively. Those over fifty would have to go through a conditional use permit signing commission review is our proposal.
Could, could we ask Scott that question since he's now here? Do you know what the reasoning is about the fifty megawatt breakpoint?
Yeah. Why we don't, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, why you make a distinction? Like what is it about fifty megawatts?
UNPA up to fifty megawatts can most likely go out in the market and get that for any of those data centers. After that, it's going to be very difficult without having dedicated generation on the site. Be able to get it on, uh, city core water and power's grid to get it here to their locations. But just fifty megawatts, I think they can do that pretty well without any challenges, but after that, it would be a challenge. Thanks.
These are the other policies in play that have already been covered. Here's kind of how they would apply, looking at data centers by size and then box up. This is, you know, this lined up on my computer. I'm not sure what's showing different, but it's fine. Hopefully the text is still let through. UNPA policy one is five to fifty. UNPA policy two is over fifty. None for under fifty or under five. Our land use standards that are approved administratively are for anything under fifty. And conditional permit for the others. Councils applies broadly to all. Hopefully this helps visualize a little bit as we're talking nesting layers of policy. All right, these are the general areas of concern that we were trying to address or at least mitigate. So as we're going through these, there, there weren't very many prior examples. There's Fairfax, Virginia, for example, had some standards and then had to go back and tighten them. So we pulled from some of their tighter standards. Even our other urban sustainability networks, no one has any. The closest I could get were Bitcoin mining data centers. So we pulled a little bit of resources from there. But even experts don't have set guides and the specifics technology within the field keeps changing. So the standards here, we tried to paint with the broad brush because we could try to regulate or require a specific technology. It might be entirely outdated and relevant to you here. So if we cast a broad enough net, hopefully we're still applying reasonable standards to anything as it pops up. But this might need to be something that we revisit. Yeah.
Okay, so you're saying under fifty would be administrative, so would never come to us, correct?
The other conditional use permits also would not come to you, but they would come to planning commission.
So I'm interested in like what the emissions are of one under fifty.
It varies.
Like the max emissions, I guess, one under fifty.
The best stats that I've, oh, no, he seems to know. Okay, I've only got stats for one with current capture.
And, and Rachel's like taking care of me. Anything under fifty, we would be going out in the market and getting that power. None of it we generate here in Provo. We would be getting it from other, some other location, but we could wheel it and then bring it into Provo with very few challenges as opposed to anything over that. So yeah, the, the, the emissions could be coming from somewhere else, could be coming, you know, say from West Valley City or.
How much water does he use?
That varies. Yeah. Well, he comes to the mic. Go ahead. I'll answer your question about emissions. It's roughly, and this is for data centers with carbon capture unfortunately are the ones that are touting their numbers most, even though that technology is not very robustly developed yet. So assume that the numbers are higher than what I'm telling you.
Yeah.
But it's roughly eighty to one hundred twenty CO2 E tons carbon dioxide equivalent. So it could be methane, but they convert it to the rough amount of carbon dioxide. So they could lump the number together between eighty and twenty CO2 E tons per megawatt hour. So as we're looking at like a forty megawatt hour, take whatever its number is multiplied by forty, that's probably going to be roughly its annual emissions.
In, in the, in that case, though, if we were packaging it for them, we could, could we get a mix of renewable energy in their power generation? So it doesn't even have to be, it's not, it could be not, it would not be local and it could also be more, you know, I don't know what percentage. Can we decide that? Can we say, well, sure. I mean, we could put a policy saying anything administratively decided on should be in this range of clean and renewable or something like that.
Certainly increase the cost. Yeah.
Renewables, to answer your question earlier, I, I do have a point to address it later in my presentation, but since you brought it up already, I'll jump to that. The state did recently pass a law that requires data centers to have one hundred percent battery backup for any renewable energy generated on site. And because renewables like wind and solar especially, which is probably what their infinity would be solar, are so temporary, they capture a couple hours of energy and you can store a couple hours worth in a battery Um, are so temporary, they capture a couple hours of energy and you can store a couple hours worth in a battery. Um, to ha- you'd have to have multiple backup battery systems to to fully cover The twenty-four seven operation of a data center with the the few hours that you're getting, so you'd have to have a massive scaled operation. An even larger battery scale, it makes it functionally impossible.
But that's referring to on onsite.
For their onsite, for what we generate, we can set whatever policies we want as far as UMPA goes. But requiring renewables for data centers is simply not feasible under state law with that battery requirement, unfortunately. Alright, so jumping in, consider throughout with all of these that they are interconnected for, oh, I'm so sorry, your water question, yes. Oh, yeah, carbon's fun.
No, so data centers traditionally use a lot of water and they have a lot of Um, fluid after the use, they create a brine. We've heard that there's a new technology with different coolants that make that not the requirement. And I again, I've seen none of the technology, nobody has shown me what this does, it may only apply to Certain size of data centers, so if a data data center comes in needing Heavy sewers, heavy water, they will be responsible for bringing offsite stuff that needs to bring it to the site. If that's something that needs to happen. They may need to do some pre-treatment if it's too much of a slurry, depending how much, how many times they run the cooling cooling towers. But um where you see the zones is close to our infrastructure. So I think that was what we were looking at in terms of the uh Six hundred acres that you were looking at is very close to our sewer treatment and our water treatment, so that It would be useful for most heavy users of both waters who are Not having a big transmission, so that's, I don't know, the answer to the question.
Yeah, and what in my reading, it seems like the surrounding areas are having issues with water around data centers, right, their prices are going up. They're making citizens use less water to make up for these data, which is the last thing I want.
In some cases, Provo is pretty well set with our water sources for now and we are investing in security for water sources. It's something to be aware of as we're discussing.
So these data centers are affected is they use the same water year round, so they don't spider. So so data centers actually will um stabilize the pricing. So the more water they use, the less peaking there is in the system, and it's the peaking that causes the problem. So um there's opportunities to even look at the fluid from the sewer treatment plant to go into these things. There's opportunities to uh look at a number of different things. One of the things that uh before John Borghit left Um, he was suggesting we can make more money and what he was talking about was a two-tier Base rate water system, in other words, because you might have a data center that uses point water. When we design our water system distributed kind of uniformly, now you have a point hole where really concentrates the use for sewer use. So they would pay a higher water rate than people that are using the system as it's designed to. So that's something we're exploring right now, so there could be a higher base rate for your sewer and water use when you have a user that Is intensifying the use, anyway, that was one of the things he recommended.
Well, that's really interesting that we could use the sewer water, you know, treated sewer water for the
There's some state issues, oh, there's things we would do, but I would like that.
What is purple pipe?
S- that is secondary water or non-powable water.
So gray water, I always, is that the same thing as gray water, they just change the color?
Every community is a little different, it's not quite gray, gray is Mostly in our state, it's untreated regular water, gray needs to link to the sewer pipe and got cleaned again. We we don't do that very often here in Utah, but this would, this, these ideas are right next to our sewer treatment plant. So that becomes a possibility. That red water. There there's hurdles that One area that we could look at a lot of different options, be very creative on solutions for waters.
Because of where our infrastructure is set up and because we do supply our own power, it lets us be a little bit more experimental and a little bit more creative Than I think other cities have been allowed to be, as I've been asking around in Utah, no one has any data center policies And I've had at least three calls with someone trying to figure out what we are doing so that they can start narrowing it. This is really forefront, we don't have precedent for this, but we have some flexibility to figure it out, that a lot of communities don't. Um, but these are interconnected, for example, as you're running water recycling systems to use less water by reusing the same water over and over again, You're going to use more energy to run those systems to move the water around, so there's always trade offs, there's always balances. Okay, so do these solutions that you're hearing today adequately address these concerns? Are there concerns that haven't been addressed that we would need to look at that aren't even on our radar? Those are kind of the two lenses, if you could look through those as we're looking at these policies. This is written as a list, I know we're basically out of time, so I'll go very quickly, but again, feel free to jump in. Where the policy has been pulled from the council office, you'll see a C O next to the policy on the screen, UMPA's says UMPA on the side, just so you know how these are overlapping. This is for the M one zone, but it's exactly the same word for word as the PIC zone, so I'll only go through it once. Uh, it would be a permitted principal use for data centers, anything not elsewhere classified. Um, fifty megawatts or less, again, would just have to abide by policies A through E, but not F. And over fifty would have to abide by all of them, including F, that's just the unique power generation requirements for UMPA. And would have to be a conditional use rather than an administrative. So data centers would go under the normal conditional uses, allowed only in the M one and PIC zones. I have just highlighted the quick versions, feel free to just skim the highlights. They have to be at least two hundred feet from any school park or residential property. And if they have any equipment for which they need to go on the market and buy emissions credits, if they're polluting over the acceptable base limit, Then that increases up to five hundred feet. Covering any financial differences from by fault, which has already been talked about. Uh, new plants plants can't be islanded, they have to be integrated with the grid, we are fine tuning the language on this also, just a heads up. Know this paragraph might look a little different as we work with UMPA. Any online site battery storage they do have has to be appropriately encased to prevent leaking. There was a Bitcoin mining data center in northern New York State that had a minor earthquake, fractured the battery, Caused some acidic leakage into the ground that contaminated groundwater, we absolutely don't want that, we want them to have renewables, that means they're going to have batteries. So we want them to do it safely, we're going to put the requirements right in there for everybody. These are the long, long, long list of everything developers have to provide for even a five megawatt data center. Project narrative and development timeline, their power load and generation plan for UMPA to review, a full site plan, of course, any legal embassy disclosures, of course. Emission credits if required, have to be required within, I'm still finding out what the right date for that is. The person has been on vacation all summer with the state and I have been trying to get this number, but it will be filled in by the time this becomes a final document. Of you know, so many days of when we issued the permit or the permit revoked and they have to go again. Those markets are freely traded on the market, there's a set number of limits per area, so within our Provo non-attainment area, If all of the, for example, VOC, which is one of the main emissions from these data centers that we're looking at outside of carbon dioxide. If all the VOC credits are bought up, then you can't buy anymore, but you can try to negotiate on the market to buy them from the current holders. So there is a bit of delay in the process, but that does set an overall countywide limit on emissions that this would of course abide by. Um, noise studies to ensure compliance with our existing noise ordinances, the community benefit plan that's mentioned in the council document, As well as that offset of risk to taxpayers, they have to identify opportunities for renewable energy investment or water use. Um, so just tell us where you could be reducing water, tell us what you're doing, tell us why you're not, if you're not. Cause we can't really require specific technology as it's developing, but we can make them explain their logic and show us their work So that we can make an informed decision about whether or not we feel like they're appropriately trying to be good partners environmentally. They have to show us their environmental review, which they will also have to show with the states, that's not a huge extra burden. Um, and a statement explaining strategies used to reduce vibrations, that's been a common problem, especially as we're looking in like Fairfax County with some of their more recent restrictions. Um, also a statement about water consumption and strata- reduction strategies. An end of life plan for all techno- technological and hazardous waste. And of course, their agreement with UMPA, this is F for only those over fifty. But it is just the generation of a power generating, the construction of a power generating facility That has to cover their entire project load that is then negotiated through with UMPA. Um, and then the plant will be transferred to UMPA with ownership of the plant to be negotiated, this is existing UMPA policy. Any concerns or questions about this before we move on to more general questions?
Well, I don't know if the if this qualifies as this, but the it's that, I want to go back to that um bullet point about on Section two encourage alignment with Provo's general plan, particularly land use sustainability innovation objectives. I think what worries me um is that that's, and I I know you're, this is obviously drafted, But I would be interested in beefing that up, making that a little bit more specific. It's a kind of an interesting question to me because in some ways it's more on the council than it is on the data center developer To say how they're, how, for us to determine how the data center may or may not help us with our general plan. I mean, I think I would like them to be familiar with it and I would like um to have them, I don't know, encourage Just doesn't sound strong enough to me, but like specify how your proposal helps us meet our goals That are in the general plan regarding water, air quality, you know, we could even list out the specifics. Um, and then uh some sort of language about our responsibilities at council would then be to Assess that impact on the city. And you know, decide whether or not it compromises our our goals uh or not. Right, um, cause I I'm just, I'm just worried about teeth, I just want something, you know, to hold them accountable, something to hold ourselves accountable to say We're we're not going to be loosey goosey about this and say, okay, yeah, there's going to be this amount of emissions, but you know, they said they're going to help us save this many gallons, so In the end, maybe that's okay, I that, you know. It it feels like, it it feels like if we're not very specific, it could be a formula for loopholes rather than than standards.
Agreed, to the first point of your two points, if you suggest a motion and, well, I guess, this is still a workshopping, But if there's a general straw poll thumbs up from the rest of the council to add a requirement that developers have to show how they are Meeting these specific goals within the general plan, that's an easy requirement to add. Um, as for the council's evaluation of whether that's sufficient, none of these would go to the council, so I don't know that that's a step In the process because they would be approved administratively or by planning commission with a conditional use of it. So at this point, there's not currently a council review.
Less than fifty.
Um, less than fifty would be approved administratively, it wouldn't even go to planning commission, it would be done at a staff level as we do with other permitted uses. And over fifty would be conditional use with the planning commission. At this point, there's no system built in or no council review step built in. Which might be a separate point to address, but that's why I'm separating the two.
It would come to the council, George, if it was a rezone. Which is how the other one came to us, was because rezones. But this is like a permitted use like any other thing within a zone.
Got it.
Like existing zones we have now.
I don't know, what do the rest of you think about that? Those two issues, I guess, right, we we want stronger language in here about the general plan. And do we want council input at some point?
You mean the ones that are fifty?
Well, it sounds like even for the ones over fifty, if they're not asking for a zone change, then it wouldn't come to us. But it seems like such a big decision, it it over fifty, it impacts the whole city that.
So would it be better if we just created another zone just for this, so that anything that had to go through had to be rezoned?
Well, the easier solution is to just not let it be a conditional use. Right, you don't need to create a new zone. The I, right, I mean, if you go back to the very beginning, the issue that we're having right now is it's currently allowed in seventeen zones, they're trying to reduce it to two. If you literally want to see every one, we should make it zero. And somebody has to come in and ask for uh a a zone change, and how how many requests are we getting?
And these are small ones, or are these are big ones? As as in above or below fifty?
We have one right now that's below fifty with the hope in the future to to go bigger if possible. This is such new technology and I will I will just say this, for UMPA, the reason we're getting these is because UMPA is the only entity in the state That said, hey, we'll do this, here's our policies, so you have to meet these requirements. Rocky Mountain Power, I said, no, UMPA said, no, and so we're getting hit sooner than anybody else is just because of that. They're they're actually at least entertaining it. Uh, obviously, the biggest concern for us are is the language protecting for over forty thousand customers. And so that's why that lady was suggesting putting his policy was was spot on and what we wanted. But yeah, if if you're could, you're talking fifty megawatts or below, that's something we get off the market. Uh, the issue might require some adjustments to the substation, no size of transformer, which is going to take a year and a half to two years to do. You just can't get that written off the market, but if it's above that, then you're talking onsite generation, which is would be required. Cause UMPA is not, you know, bringing this from the megawatts from somewhere else and then we get it in Provo, it'd have to be onsite generation. And so the second one, as a proposal, this is going to be coming here soon to the CRC specifically requesting onsite generation. Up to uh much larger than fifty. So those are the only two that I'm aware of. And Spanish Fork is getting some things, there's not a lot ironically going on in other cities because UMPA's in line, Rocky Mountain Powers is not allowing it, and and UMPA is.
And their reasoning is what?
Well, their hope is this is where the traffic, most of traffic is down in June County and other locations in the state would probably be more Appropriate for it because of the air quality requirements. Um, but because part of UMPA territory exists in Provo, Spanish Fork, Spanish Fork is also doing this, one matter of fact, they took our Our ordinances and and how the 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 development service has been working on, the council worked on. And they're utilizing that to help form their foundations as well, because they've got a couple of requests as well. And I don't know what about those two, the the ones that they have.
Yeah, I I I I'm not big on the council getting involved in every decision that needs to be made. I like the idea of like, let's set the parameters. This is such a significant that the potential for catastrophe is significant. The potential for getting it wrong is significant. I'd almost prefer as we go into this, that we look at all of these things so we can also learn. I just don't know enough. So my my bias would be that the we we find a way for the council to be involved in all of these initially, we're we're talking about You know, handfuls, not dozens and dozens, maybe against the best of these dozens, hopefully the one we have policies that we're comfortable with. That'd be my sense.
Future council, then I was changed that.
Do others see that the same way? See it differently?
I think, yeah, I think that council needs oversight and there's not administrative, there needs to be council oversight.
For all sizes or just for those that are over fifty?
I think all sizes, if we're not getting very many.
We'll work out a a procedure for that, if that is, can I get a straw poll from the rest of the council, it doesn't have to be a
Brian's about to say something I can see is in my
It just is always turning.
Um, just trying to think through This isn't a concern with the I don't have a concern with what you're voicing about your concern and your and your policy and I have a concern about what I've seen happen before Um, in this kind of situation, which is If you, if you take, if you decide to just Remove all opportunity for from the code whatsoever, so that you can have complete control when somebody comes. I've seen in the past where that leads to then ignoring the issue until you have an application in front of you. And then the application is going to consist of a proposed text amend, a text amendment by the applicant in order to get what they want. And you're going to be trying to make all of these decisions in the midst of processing their actual application. And so again, that's not a, that's not a don't do what you're proposing kind of thing, that's a, if that's where you want to go. I think you would be well advised to Form kind of some some subcommittee or ask for some, you know, semi bi-monthly reports back. I think you will want to be working on the questions that you want answered when you get an application before you get the application.
That that makes sense to me, we would not want to be playing defense all the time. Or having applicants define what the Or having applicants define what the criteria is, so I, I think that makes sense.
Yeah, and I, I, I wanna be clear, I don't think this is about any sort of trust or distrust between administration and council, it's just that if, if it becomes purely administrative, then it doesn't go to the public, and that seems like it potentially harms the whole city, right, if something gets approved and it doesn't go well, and it wasn't public, it wasn't as transparent, but if we're super clear about what the criteria are, and we're working together on, I like the idea of maybe a subcommittee with the, the administration and council and working out what our policies are as we're starting to do now, and then we adopt them, but we create a, a trigger whereby it comes through um, all the bodies, and it always has these public hearings, I mean, there is, I guess, the planning commission makes it a public, but it seems like if it goes through the council, it, it sort of fully flushes out the the public process in a way that protects us a little better.
Yeah, and so as I'm thinking through that, and that, you know, Bill and I were both shaking our head when, when Becky said this before, but now I'm not so sure that she didn't actually have the right idea. I'm not sure how to accomplish what you're proposing, other than to create a data center zone that the only thing, the only permitted use in the zone is a data center. And you create the zone and you spend the time as we pass the zone defining all of the criteria that you're gonna want to
Overlay the zone or a zone?
Because I suppose it could be an overlay, um, Bill's, Bill's ready to talk, but I just don't know how you're gonna do it otherwise.
No, it's, that's, suggests something just like that, cause I don't know how you could under the other scenario, we're going to have an M one zone and a P I C zone going forward, and if the first applicant who wants to do one of these, could have that as a permitted use or conditional use, and that opens up the door for everybody else's bathroom. So it would have to be something like what Brian just described, in order to have it side by side, application by application coming before you, I mean, Brian's on the right track.
Yeah, and, and that gives you, I think that gives you an opportunity to do what I was just suggesting. If we continue work on developing the overlay or developing the zone, that lets it not fall off your radar, so you can work on the criteria, the one thing that I, the one concern I suppose I have, um, I don't, concern is the wrong word, I apologize, I've forgotten that word, but as I'm listening to George, the one thing that occurs to me is, and maybe this is exactly why it needs to be an overlay, so that it actually comes to you, is just as Justin and Hannah and Scott have been struggling to articulate what all of these criteria mean, I think you're gonna have a really hard time defining specifically with specific parameters and details, the criteria that would, that would, um, that would lead to approval, because I think that you are, the technology is evolving, evolving so rapidly, and, you know, we've got, we're talking about a hundred and fifty megawatt stations. Open A I is talking about gigawatt uh data centers, right, uh, of course. Meta's, Meta's got one plan that, I've seen diagrams of it, it's the size of the island of Manhattan. So, so, things are changing so fast that I think, I think your, your criteria are gonna have to be broad principles that you want to consider in the moment, instead of specific details about how to answer those principles. But that in many ways probably is exactly why you need to review it.
Yes, yeah, agreed.
Just to kind of touch on the overlay zone, so Eagle Mountain City, who's got a number of these in the works, has done the same thing, they've got an overlay zone now, they have done it a little differently, and they've designated the overlay in certain areas already, but that way does come to, to them for approval, so.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanna caution the group that our pending legislation expires on October twenty-third. If we don't have something adopted, we've got at least one application in the process to be able to move forward.
September twenty-third?
October twenty-third. Our, our pending legislation expires then, so just be careful, we're gonna need to either start taking out of certain zones, or we could do something before then.
Yeah.
Or divide us, is all I'm saying.
Right, yeah, because the one, to, to, to Bill's point, we need to make sure we don't miss that, because like, it's, it's allowed in seventeen zones right now, once that ti- time period expires, applications in those zones are automatically vested. But the, that doesn't mean you have to have the new overlay in place by then, you can pass an, yeah, an amendment to zoning code that removes it as a permitted use in all the current zones. Uh, and that basically puts in a per- permanent moratorium and solubils it, action through system. Yeah.
So I guess my question to the group would be, do we want to do as Brian just said, and just not allow it in any zone in Provo for now, until we get the overlay written? Or do we wanna just allow it in just the two zones with an overlay in the future?
I think this is pretty good, like, I think this is a good overarching, and I think the two zones is good, we just need to have it not be conditional use. And that we have to, but then they could still do it in the zone without us talking to us.
Yeah, why can't, why can't we take this draft and say this
And just make it
Describes an overlay zone.
Yeah.
That could only be applied to these two.
To these two zones.
And, yeah, I mean, I kinda like the idea of giving us time to get to the overlay zone worked, worked out, but putting a moratorium on anything that is coming is meantime, because of I mean, it sounds like at least one of them might be a very large one, and so that somehow gets through without us having all the standards in place, and that is not what we want, so. And we, we don't have to take too much time of this, but I think we wanna get it right, I just, just something you said really resonated with me, I mean, the potential for mistakes here is, is pretty high, so I don't think we wanna.
And you can, if, if we go down this, if you go down the overlay route, because it's a rezone, because you have absolute discretion, you can, you actually, in my view, have some time to work on criteria, you could, you could actually pass a bare bones overlay and then flesh it out later, because even the bare bones version, they have to come to you, they have to apply for the rezone, and you have complete discretion whether to approve it or not. So, a- again, if you wanna, because we've got a couple in the, in the works, right, if you wanna, like, not unnecessarily delay them, you could pass a bare bones overlay, review those two, maybe reviewing those two would even help you flesh out your criteria, and you could amend the overlay and add more detail and more, more flesh on the bones, so to speak.
And this would be the bones?
Good, good, yeah.
Yeah. I like that.
Yeah, cause I, I like the idea that through this process and this policy, we actually create something that is viable for people who want to bring a data center here of the different sizes, so that we're not just automatically closing the doors on it, but that we are able to discretion and protect the community and everything. I, I don't want it to, to be something that makes it look like it's allowable when ultimately it's not, that doesn't seem to be a useful piece of legislation. But I think we may be on a good path here.
So maybe we look for a motion to give Hannah direction on what she's presented in terms of a bare bones uh, policy, and then subsequent to that, we could look at the committee that could help us flesh out some of the details.
Sounds like you're making a motion.
Sure sound like a motion being.
Is that a motion, Gary? I'll second it if you wanna make a motion.
If that was a clear motion, I'm happy to, uh, make it as a motion.
So we just had, and then we're asking you ahead of that, that the direction should be given, is to come up with legislation that would lead you towards an overlay zone, right?
Yes.
I would second that, if Gary says what Bill said, I'll second him.
All right, any discussion on the motion?
Well, our, our A D U policies have been so successful, maybe we just copy that and have two-thirds of the businesses around, they provide their feedback.
Nice. Too soon.
Okay, we'll call for a vote, Councilor Hanley?
Yes.
Councilor Christians?
Yes.
Councilor Blutman?
Yes.
Councilor Garrett, yes, Councilor Whipple?
Yes.
Councilor Hoben?
Yes.
Councilor McKay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, so that motion passes seven zero, and then we'll get with the council staff to look at forming a committee that can help us move this forward.
Yeah.
Thank you, Hannah.
Thank you, Hannah.
And thank you, Justin.
And thank you.
And all those who
For your motion.
If there is no objection, we'll now adjourn the council work session by unanimous consent.
Recording stopped.